I would like to call the June 29th School Board Meeting to order. Wichita Public Schools will be the district of choice in our region where all students and staff are empowered to dream, believe, and achieve. Would you please stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you and welcome. Patrick, first item.
First item, public communications.
And I'm seeing none, so next item.
Next item, under reports, Service Employees International, SEIU.
Hey, welcome. We've missed seeing you for awhile. Glad you're back, Isa.
Hi, everybody. How are you today? Good. Thank you very much. I got it at a training when I was out in Vegas, but I'm happy to say I didn't use all the tactics this year that they taught me out there. So, we're happy to report that things are getting done. You know, I think we all know what our major struggles are and our custodians are out there trying to get the buildings ready for everybody and it is hot and, you know, we just appreciate keeping those buildings as cool as we absolutely can and we should really give a shout out to all those people that are doing the summer work and, you know, mowing the lawns and things like that because not one of us would like to be out there if we didn't have to be. So, and while I'm giving shout outs, a big union shout out to 839 and to the nurses. They are definitely what helps keep living wages going at some of the factories in this town and I heard a great sentiment on the news this morning and one of the questions was, was well, why didn't they just give us their best offer to begin with? Why did we have to even go through this? And that's one of the things that I typically enjoy about the school district is I think that a lot of times you guys try to bring forward that best and final offer. If it wasn't for all the clowns in Topeka messing with the funding, we wouldn't be in the situation we are. So, but we appreciate the work and what you guys are trying to do and get worked out and we look forward to getting back into negotiations in August and we have some people from our Labor Management Group heading down to the Mid-American Labor Management Conference and we hope to be able to bring back a good report to the board and to DLT and let them hear about some new trends and maybe what they're doing in other areas to bring people in and to staff and take care of some of the challenges that we're looking at. So, thank you for the opportunity to speak today.
Thank you. And please encourage your workers to continue to drink water and take breaks as they need to because this heat is just not good.
Absolutely. That's one of my favorite words, break.
Thank you. Next item.
Next item, under reports, United Teachers of Wichita.
Hi, Katie.
Hi, good afternoon. I, Mike was so nice, he was here last time, so it's so good to see everybody and I hope you're having, staying cool with this hot weather. Good afternoon, BOE President Logan, Vice President Albert, Board Members, and Superintendent Beilefeldt. Did I say that right? Okay, I've been practicing. I stand before you today as the President of United Teachers of Wichita, but more importantly, as a passionate advocate for the education profession. I'm here to emphasize the crucial importance of collaboration with educators for their working conditions directly impact our student learning conditions. First and foremost, it's important to recognize that our educators in USD 259 possess a wealth of knowledge, skills, and expertise that is essential for nurturing our students' learning, growing, and development. However, their effectiveness is greatly influenced by the working conditions that they face daily. When educators are supported, respected, and provided with the necessary resources, their enthusiasm and dedication to their craft shines through. They're able to create engaging lesson plans, foster positive classroom environments, and tailor their teaching methods to meet the diverse needs of every student. In turn, this leads to improved student outcomes and academic success. On the contrary, when educators face adverse working conditions such as excessive workload, limited resources, and lack of support, their ability to effectively educate our students is compromised. It is not only wrong, but also counterproductive to expect educators to deliver exceptional teaching while being subjected to unfavorable working conditions. Collaboration with educators is not just a matter of fairness, it's an investment in our children's future. By actively involving educators in those decision-making processes and valuing their input, we tap into a wealth of knowledge that can inform policies and practices aimed at improving student learning outcomes. Our educators are on the front lines, they're interacting with our students day in and day out. Their insights and expertise are invaluable in shaping educational strategies that truly meets the needs of our students. Moreover, collaboration fosters a sense of empowerment among our educators. When they feel heard and valued, they are empowered to go above and beyond for their students. My ask for you today is that you put collaboration with our educators at the forefront of any decisions that you're making for this upcoming school year. We need to stop doing things to our dedicated teachers and shift to a mindset of doing things with our teachers. It's the right thing to do for our staff and for our students. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next item.
Next item, consent.
Kathy Bond, do you have anything to pull?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes.
C1, 2, 3, and 4.
C1, 2, 3, and 4. Okay, Julie.
I have nothing to pull this week.
Hazel.
B1, number 15 in the summary.
E1, number 15. Okay. Oh, B, thank you. B1, number 15. Diane.
I have nothing to pull.
I have nothing to pull today. Stan.
I just have a quick question for Kelly and Vince on C5.
C5.
So, I'd like to pull C5.
All right. Ernestine?
Nothing to pull.
Okay, thank you. Let's start with Kathy's, well, let's vote on the other parts of the agenda, of the consent agenda, if we can pass those.
I move the other consent items be approved other than those pulled.
Thank you.
Could you please confirm which item it is you pulled because there is no C5?
C5, certifying special education teachers.
Well, that's D.
I apologize. D5. Thank you, Patrick.
Okay. Julie made the motion to accept the rest of the consent agenda and Kathy seconded. Please raise your right hand. Motion passes 7-0. Let's start with Kathy's pulls on C1, 2, 3, and 4.
Is there someone I'm addressing this to or just to the board?
Or to Mr. Beilefeldt?
Yeah. Yeah, ask your question and then Kelly will decide if you need somebody to pull.
Okay, for C1, under the arts programs partners, are these ESRS that must be used and what will happen the following year to this program? And then I have one more question in the body of the purpose. It says this year there was a program change from the previous year that increased costs. What was that change?
So, the second question, I don't know if Michelle Kuda was here, John, you know the answer to that. To answer the first question, we're gonna, we're working on a summer school report for you all so we can report on kind of what next year looks like. We do have ESRS funding through summer of '24, so that's not to promise today this is going to continue next year, but these ESRS summer school things will look a little different next summer, but we have one more summer of ESRS-funded summer school. So, does that answer your question?
Yes, it does. And I just wanted to know if it was going to be sustainable for next year and you've just answered that. And then what were the changes that would cost $28,000?
Last year, they got some feedback after that program and they decided not to do virtual anymore. So, that caused a different distribution of the program itself, which caused arts partners to hire more artists, more supplies, things like that, which equated to the amount.
That explains it. Thank you. C2, the Goodwill Industries renewal. I have a question. Is it $50,000 per student or $50,000 total to be funded by SPECT? And then I've got it highlighted here that Goodwill Industries of Kansas agrees to provide a program for up to six full-time and/or part-time students selected by the district. I want to know, how does the district come about choosing those students and what criteria do those students have to have and why can't we offer this to all students who might be qualified for this?
My good friends who are both doctors know that I do not know these answers, so they came to the podium. So, thank you, fellas.
Excellent question, Mrs. Bond. Vince Evans, I'm your Assistant Superintendent of Student Sports Services. I have with me today somebody who doesn't get to join me very often. This is Dr. Justin Hopp. He's our Director of Low-Incidence Programming here in the district. To answer your question, and I'll let Justin hop in with anything, I mess up here, but there's $50,000 allocated to this that we could spend, but we don't have to. That would be a maximum of $50,000. So, this is an agreement that we keep in our pocket because we like working with our friends at Goodwill and we only use it if an IEP team deems that a student needs those services. So, for example, last year we had the same contract, same potential dollar amount, but we didn't spend any of the money because there wasn't any of the IEP teams that said, "I have a student that needs to go to this CBI type of instruction at Goodwill." So, it could certainly extend to more than six students in future years if we wanted to expand the contract. We just haven't historically had a need for it to be more than six. Does that answer your question?
Yes, and if we don't spend that money, do we get to save it or do we lose it?
Correct. Last year, $0 was awarded to Goodwill, but the agreement was there in case it needed to be utilized.
Okay. I think, I think that explains it. Thank you very much. Okay. C3. How much is this grant and for Verizon Innovative Learning Lab, how much is the grant from, total? It doesn't say it on here.
Yeah, so it, Verizon will cover 100% of the construction costs of the lab. That scope hasn't been determined yet. We've done basically a virtual view of the room which is on the first floor that would be turned into the STEM lab and after that, then Verizon would set what that scope looks like and then the funds would come from there.
Okay, and this, this is because of the application that the middle schools have, have made. And there are four middle schools that are not included in this.
Correct.
Is that because they chose not to apply?
Nope. It's because they're not title. They don't, they're not designative as, as title schools. So, our 12 Vills Middle Schools, which we applied all 12, which are title middle schools, title one schools, those schools applied and were received the Verizon Innovative Learning School Grant initially. And then within that, Arizona State University identifies some opportunities for those schools to apply for a STEM grant that would transform a room within that school to be a STEM lab. It'll bring in Verizon's 5G, AR/VR stuff, robotics, all kinds of really cool stuff. And out of that, Marshall was identified and applied and received this grant.
So, the schools that are listed, the 12 ones that I have here with the current learning schools, they are all title schools?
Yes.
And so, the four that are not, which is Wilbur, Isley, Horace, Mann, and Gordon Parks, they can apply for grant to have something in there for them or do they have to become a title one to qualify?
Yeah, in order to be a Verizon Innovative Learning School, that title status is a requirement.
Huh. That makes me sad because those four schools are missing out on some pretty special education and good stuff.
I agree.
So, what do we need to do to get them on board?
There's, there are some ways. I don't make those decisions, but I'll let Kelly.
Maybe we can collaborate on that in the next year. I mean, I hate to see those students in those schools not have those same opportunities as the other ones.
Yeah. So, I think the principle is that all of our non-title middle schools would, would feel your pain or understand what you're saying. You know, the way title funds work, we are able to designate, when we get title ones federally, we're able to designate what qualifies as a title school and what doesn't. As you can guess, you know, the intention of those funds is to help students in poverty. So, as you can guess, the more schools you have, the more you're spreading out those dollars, which lessens the impact. So, it's kind of a balance of, you know, you know, do you want to have that be five middle schools? Do you want to have it be 10 middle schools or all the middle, you know? At what point do we, do we make that cutoff to where we're making sure there's an impact with those dollars and not spreading them too thin, but same time allowing access? So, I know Brooks Middle School and there was one other one that recently, like since I've been in the district, became a title one school. But it's all based on free and reduced numbers and federal poverty limits is how the qualifications happen.
Well, I'm hoping we can change some of those qualifications and who do I, you know? What do we need to do?
Yeah.
That's all. Maybe a different conversation a different time.
Yep.
Thank you.
C4.
Yes, ma'am. Again, you probably have to stay up here, sorry. The Innovative Learning School Extension MOU, is it customary to recommend a grant for the board to recommend a grant? Is that necessary?
I think it's been practice in the past, especially when there's a commitment to the district to follow through with those opportunities in year three and four, so...
And how much are we recommending?
Basically, it's to fulfill the rest of that grant. So, they will, they'll pay for half of the Vills coaches for year three and then we're going to combine those in year four so that there's not a cost to the district. But then Verizon supplies internet to every staff device in Vills and every student device in Vills throughout the entire program, the rest of that program.
So, we're going to recommend enough of a grant to where we, the district will not be financially responsible for this?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep.
I would like to make a motion to pass items C1, 2, 3, and 4.
Thank you. Is there a second? Julie seconds it. The motion was made by Kathy and seconded by Julie. Please raise your right hand if you approve. Motion passes 7-0. Hazel, B1.
Who am I asking this question to?
Probably Luke.
Luke?
Yeah. Custodial Services. Yep.
It's number 15.
It's, it looks like $800,000 for custodial services.
Yeah.
Has your name by it, so I'm assuming you know someone. You know more than I do.
So, I know last year when we spoke about this, mostly I'm wondering, I know we, we did this last year where we outsourced our maintenance employees. So, how many, how many positions do you expect to fill and will they be full-time or rotational employment? And what do you see the positives of last, of the past in doing this? Because I feel like $800,000 is a lot of money to give to, to outsource to a company where we have our own custodial people and are we not promoting, are we not hiring people or, I mean, I'm just wondering why this number?
We are hiring. We do have vacancies out there still. It's just been something that we've been able to use to fill, to help supplement our staff. It's not to replace our staff. It's 16 employees, so it's not a whole lot, but it's been enough for us to kind of spread around the district as needs arise. And it's given us some, some flexibility that we don't have with our building-based custodians that are always at the same building. Sometimes needs fluctuate depending on, you know, who's out and, you know, where we have vacancies and so we can kind of move them around to buildings as needed. And it's been, it's been successful. There have been some growing pains and we've had to learn some things through it, but I would say our contractor is, has stepped up and they're getting better and they're really starting to deliver the, they're delivering what we expect of them.
Okay, so, the interaction with our employees, is there, are they like, are they subbing or are they filling full-time positions or how, how does this work?
Kind of, yeah. Sometimes they, they sub where there's, where there's extended vacancies in our buildings. If there are people that are out on vacation, we usually use our relief custodians to fill those, those needs because we have some in-house relief custodians too that we move around the district. But generally, it's, we mostly use them for the buildings that, where we know we just don't really have quite enough people in-house to address the amount of square footage we have in that building. And so, we'll bring in contracted help to kind of cover parts of the building or certain parts of the custodial responsibilities. So, yes, they interact with our staff, but they, they generally kind of operate somewhat independently from our staff and just kind of help cover parts of the building is generally how we try to set it up to where we know exactly what the contractor is covering and then what we're covering.
So, are we satisfied with the, with their doing?
Yeah, I mean, there's no, there's no replacing what we get from our in-house custodians, but it's, it's an alternative mechanism to, to help supplement, you know, a need. And the truth is, for whatever reason, I can't tell you exactly, we do have, we have vacancies out there that we're not able to fill right now. And so, this gives us the ability to make sure we get some help in our buildings where they direly need it.
Okay, and then one other question. So, the $800,000, is that what you expect to, when, it's not like a, like we're not going to pay them $800,000 or it's going to be, we'll pay them as need basis as they work?
Yeah.
And that's the cap? $800,000 is the cap?
Yeah, sorry to cut you off. We, it's $800,000 not to exceed, so if we don't use them, that full amount, then we won't, then we won't pay at all. We have found that we're in a place where we're pretty consistent, we have a good plan for them, to where we generally use all six, all 16 of them on a regular basis. So, we're pretty confident that most of that money will be used by the end of the fiscal year.
Okay, and one other question.
Yeah.
What we're paying them, is it comparable to what we're paying our employees?
Yes, it's, it's similar.
Okay, all right. Thank you. I move that we pass B1, number 15 in summary on custodial.
Thank you.
I'll second.
It was moved by Hazel and seconded by Ernestine. If you vote yes, please raise your right hand. Motion passes 7-0. Stan, D5.
Thank you, Cheryl. I just wanted to state that I support this effort to help make up the shortages for certified special education teachers with tuition reimbursement and book support. But I thought this would be an opportunity for either Kelly or Vince or both to kind of give the board an update on how we are standing with our shortages of special education teachers. And I guess the short answer or the short question is, are we making progress or regressing or what's the trend in this area?
That's a good question, Mr. Reese. I do want to give, I agree with you completely on the value of this program.
Yes.
Want to make sure and give props to my friend, Dr. Hopp over here, because he really is the one that keeps it organized and structured along with my colleague, Shaheerah Oakman. They're the ones that, that make it function on a day-to-day basis. And it's certainly not something that every district offers. It's not the norm by any stretch of the imagination. So, it's a great perk to staff that might be hearing about this or hear about it from a colleague or a friend that want to come to USD 259 because we would certainly welcome you. To answer your question, I think that the situation remains stable and the situation remains critical. We have a incredible need for teachers, paraprofessionals, custodians, as you just heard about, within this district. So, to anyone that knows anyone that might be looking for an amazing place to work, we would welcome the opportunity to talk with you. Justin would love to sit down with you one-on-one and talk about how we might be able to pay for your college tuition to get you through the doors here. I think the last absence report that I saw come from HR was in mid-June and we had 49 special education teaching vacancies at that point. That's a lot. It's a lot statewide. In August of last school year, I believe there was 1,600 teaching vacancies across the state. We're 10% of the students, we've got a lot of those vacancies. I'd like to get that addressed and I think we've got the resources to do so. This is a great place to teach. We just need to find ways to continue attracting top-quality talent here.
Thank you, Vince. I move that we approve D5 certifying special education teachers.
I second it.
It was moved by Stan and seconded by Kathy that we approve D5. If you agree and vote yes, raise your right hand, please. Motion passes 7-0. Next item.
Next item, under operations, second review, Board of Education Meetings Calendar.
Okay, this is our second review. We will approve this at our next meeting. I think it's the next meeting in July, is that correct?
Yes.
Yes, thank you. Any questions or concerns about the BOE calendar? Okay, I'm seeing none, so we will take that under advisement and vote on it at the next meeting. Next item.
Next item, under finance, Budget Report.
Susan.
Different setting, but we're glad to see you again.
Good afternoon, President Logan, Vice President Albert, Superintendent Beilefeldt, and members of the board. Today, we are going to, if I can get my presentation open. Right? I'm going to back off for a moment.
We're going to talk primarily today, I'm sorry.
We're going to turn our seats a little bit to see your PowerPoint.
Oh, good. Thank you. That's better. Just didn't see those coming yet, sorry.
We're going to have our second conversation about the revenue neutral rate. You can see our timeline is, we are now down to the final five budget conversations we'll have before we adopt a revenue neutral rate and budget for the fiscal year '24. As a reminder, what revenue neutral rate means, it is the tax rate for the upcoming year, so that would be 2024, that would generate the same property tax revenue as what we levied last year. So, revenue neutral means revenues are the same. In other words, revenue neutral means no new funding or it means flat funding. So, when you have flat funding but your costs are going up, typically you would be talking about cuts that need to be made. And that's the challenge with being revenue neutral in an inflationary position. When our overall inflation kind of across the country is coming down, but it still remains high in certain spending categories for the district, particularly in custodial and construction materials. So, we're still seeing significant inflation impacts to our budget in those areas and we're going to talk through kind of how that is impacting our mill levy decision-making in, as we are preparing for the fiscal year '24 budget. Kind of to put all of that in a graph, because I think we like pictures, a little bit better than some of the words, the black line is staying revenue neutral and really it's staying revenue neutral if, if we did it for a period of four or five years. And inflation will push your costs up in that same period of time. So, the gap that forms between being revenue neutral and increasing costs would be revenue shortfall and you would need to take some sort of action, typically a budget cut, in order to balance your budget. And again, that is the challenge for all taxing entities in being revenue neutral in a, in a situation where their costs continue to go up. So, a reminder of the timeline related to this, the revenue neutral rate, the county has notified us of what the, what the revenue neutral rates are and then we need to decide by July 20th what we're going to send the county as far as maximum tax rates for the new fiscal year. But this particular date is not a decision on what the mill levy will be. It only sets a max. It really is our intent to exceed the revenue neutral rate. It's not setting a mill levy. I want to make sure that's clear. We are not making that decision today of what the mill rates will be. We'll make that after we get input from our taxpayers by holding that revenue neutral rate hearing and you seeing the development of the budget through that first look and then the, kind of that follow-up meeting where we, we'll go through how we addressed our needs assessments and the budget, all of that... of that work leads up to that revenue-neutral rate hearing and final adoption of the rates and the budget. But that is not what we're doing today. Today is really more, what is the board supportive of exceeding the revenue-neutral rate as a, as a budgetary planning process? So we know kind of what direction we need to head. A reminder of where the assessed valuations landed. Essentially, the funds are up at least 8%, if not a little higher, depending on the category. You can see capital outlay was up 8.9%. So if the district would take no action on its mill levy, it stayed exactly the same, taxpayers will pay more in property taxes because of the increase in assessed valuation. Same for the county, same for the city. If none of the taxing entities move on their mill levies down, in order to offset that growth, taxpayers will pay more taxes. But it won't be because of necessarily an action we took to increase the mill levy. That's assuming we stay flat. A reminder on the general fund piece of the mill levy, which is 20 mills, we don't have control over that mill levy. That's set by statute, and it, it does not have to stay revenue-neutral. The state will take 20 mills, and so the state will receive about $4.7 million of an increase in taxes it can use to support education. We talked last meeting about the capital outlay needs, the significant needs. You've heard it from our facilities staff. You'll be getting more information related to, you know, the kind of the breadth and depth of those needs in, in upcoming meetings. But to stay revenue-neutral in this fund, which would mean this fund would forego about $2.4 million, is the last thing this particular fund really can afford to do because of the facility footprint that the district currently occupies and the building needs related to the age and deferred maintenance. So we will, this one, I can pretty much assure you, we will be building a budget, assuming you are comfortable and you've given me the go-ahead to exceed revenue-neutral, we will build a budget at eight mills. Where we get a little bit less clarity is around what's called the other funds. And the other funds for us are made up of three different mill levy pieces. One is bond and interest, one is the supplemental general, also known as the LOB, and the other for us is special liability. Now, we're, we're very comfortable in, in that we will be coming down a little bit in bond and interest and a little bit in special liability based on the needs in those funds. Unfortunately, the Kansas Department of Education has not released its state aid amounts for funds yet. So I don't know what the state aid is yet for the local option budget, the supplemental general fund. It makes it very difficult to give you a good estimate until I have that number. So what I am, I am planning at this point is, is we're going to go into budget planning with wanting 33% on the LOB. We want to continue to max that, that particular funding source, because again, remember what we're paying out of the LOB. It's utilities, it's transportation, it's property casualty, it's technology, and it supports transfers to other funds at-risk bilingual special ed. So we really need those dollars to be maximized in this particular fund. And so I just don't have a really good estimate yet, because I really don't want to quote a number. And then we get that state aid figure that's gone either up or down, and I'm giving you a whole different number when we mail that to Sedgwick County. So what I'm asking today is maybe a small leap of faith, that I will, I will continue to represent what the board has shared with me, is we want to keep taxes as low as possible and yet still maximize the funding for wages and the, the necessary expenditures that we have coming up in fiscal year '24, but that you're approving us communicating with the county by the 20th, that we have an intent to exceed the revenue-neutral rate in both capital outlay and in other funds for fiscal year '24, and that we will provide a copy of those rates to the board prior to us mailing them off, so that you will be informed before they go to taxpayers. So I will pause there to see if there's any questions from the board.
Kathy?
Thank you. As always, you, you present so well. I'm just not following you.
Nope, perfectly good.
Okay. If we don't intend to exceed the revenue-neutral rate, what happens?
So if the board is going to instruct us that we have to stay at the 21.755 in other funds and the 7.349 in capital outlay, then I will go back and, and basically have to, which I can, we'll have to rebuild the budget timeline. So we'll have to move faster because the, the budget has to be adopted faster if you stay revenue-neutral. I will also then have to propose a series of cuts, because the funds will not be able to sustain what our plan right now is without those funds. I, I need the dollars in the funds.
So it's in the benefit of the district, but not the taxpayer to exceed the revenue-neutral?
Well, it certainly is the benefit of, of the, of the taxing entity to capture tax growth, hopefully without increasing the mill levy. So what we're capturing is the assessed valuation growth. Yes, the taxpayer has a slightly bigger burden, but it's primarily because of assessed valuation, not because of our action, but because of our inaction of reducing it to stay revenue-neutral, to basically not have any new revenues in those funds, the, the taxpayer is basically feeling the full effect or partial effect of that assessed valuation increase.
So are the SIR funds included in all of this?
Yes.
So next year, when we're at this point, we won't have SIR funds to talk about?
Correct.
Can you give me a projection of, are we going to need to have an intent to exceed neutral revenue next year?
Well, I had shared with the board, I will, while I'm in the seat, I will always recommend the full eight mills on capital outlay because of the extreme need in that fund related to our facility costs. The buildings are getting older every day. You know, 60-year-old buildings on average take, and take additional dollars. The repairs are more expensive, they're larger, they're, the, the replacement of, of mechanical systems is significant in those older buildings, because you're having to rip out a lot in order to find what you need to kind of put in. You find new problems when you start a project that you didn't anticipate. They're just complicated. So I will always recommend revenue-neutral. The other funds are going to be dependent on need. So for example, we might be able to continue to come down on the bond and interest fund unless the board, as it's looking at its capital needs, determines a bond is in our future. And at that point, we would be talking about what does that look like and what sort of bond and interest mill rate do we need to support a next bond. So that crystal ball will be really dependent on how the board wants to move on that particular topic and how quickly the board wants to move on that particular topic. The, the local option budget will always be a swing set, unfortunately, or teeter-totter. It will depend how much cash we have left, what our state aid is, and what percentage we want to maximize of the general fund, 31, 32, 33%. And unfortunately, because of the nature of the expenditures in that particular fund, which are driven by not only inflation, but by contract stipulations such as transportation, and I can only imagine when first student's contract is up, they will be coming back and we will probably be looking at a significant increase in that particular contract. There will be needs in this fund ongoing. I mean, and that's the, if you look back at the entire premise of, of Gannon, the, the court case, it was, it's very, it's, it's, it's not good for students when revenue stays flat, because we have increasing costs. 75% of our, our costs are people costs who need and deserve wages, wage increases, and then we have utility costs that go up, we have property casualty, just like you do in your home budget. It's the same kind of concept. So you, you have a difficult time staying revenue-neutral with, in your home budget, because your utility rates are going up, and you're paying more for car insurance and house insurance. The district's budget is in the same boat. So we unfortunately have to capture some of this growth, but we try to really be very purposeful to keep it to a minimum.
And we don't know how much the state aid's going to be yet?
That we don't know.
And how much of an influence will that be on these numbers?
It will, it will swing it by, it shouldn't swing it by a full mill, but it will definitely swing it by a couple points, a couple decimal points.
So what we recommend today, state aid won't matter at that point, right?
Only on, only on the local option that I may need to either, I, I'm hoping I can come down a little bit, right? That's, that's the hope, is it's, we, we might, instead of getting 46 or 47%, we might get 52. And if we get 52, that means I can pull down on that mill levy, and I will absolutely do that, because I have to do that, right? It's an inverse formula. If it's not, if, if the rates would be, say, 40%, then we have a choice to make of whether we go full 33% on the LOB and take that, that mill levy up to its, its maximum, or we take less on the LOB, so we're at 31 or 32, to keep the mill levy closer to what it is.
Thank you. Ernestine?
It doesn't make sense to me that in a time when all of our costs are inflating, that we should, well, to, I, I just don't see the reason for staying revenue-neutral when our costs are not staying neutral. They are not staying the same, that we are expanding all of the costs in everything, everything from gasoline to electricity to, well, we hope that we can do for salaries and, and everything is going up. And for us to stay revenue-neutral just doesn't make sense to me when the rest of the society is, well, it means we'd have to cut, and it, and I don't see places where we're just saying, oh, well, that's extra. We've been doing that and it's just superfluous, so we can sure cut that. I really don't think that we should try to be revenue-neutral. I am, I am grateful that we have been able to keep our mill levy flat. And, but as everybody's homes have increased in value, and therefore their taxes have gone up, my taxes have gone up, I'm aware that part of that thing, that the whole reason of that is the same thing that all the prices in our society are going. So I'm just not at all in favor of staying revenue-neutral. I really think that we need to take, in order to meet our bills and in order to do what our children need and re-provide the education that they need, and without, we're not even increasing what they need, we're just wanting to do what we've had in the past. I oppose in the revenue-neutral idea.
I have one question, and then I want to make a motion. The increase that, that our taxpayers are seeing is driven by the assessed valuation of property taxes, correct?
Yes.
And what we've seen in the past, in your reports, is that you have worked very hard to keep our mill levy very close to what it was last year. Our amount will go up because of that assessed valuation, but the mill levy is not going to increase. Is that a correct statement?
The, the, our intent at this point, not seeing that, that state aid amount yet. So that's the only caveat to your comment, is that if we would have some sort of major change in what our percentage of state aid is in the local option budget, I might be coming back to you with that first look in July saying, I've built a first look for you based on 33%, but because our state aid went down, I needed to raise the mill levy to raise the appropriate amount of taxes. That's a slight possibility. But our intent is, hopefully we're at least somewhat even, if not a little bit better on state aid coming, coming into fiscal year '24, and that I can come down on that LOB mill levy so that we will do exactly what we have been doing, is at a minimum be a little bit less than we were in the prior year, but at no worse than flat. That's, that's, that is, 70%, sure, that's where we're going to land, but again, until I see the state aid number, I don't want to make promises that I don't at least get the board's input on, here are your, here's A, B, and C, right? Here's 33% and what the mill levy would look like. Here's 32% and what the mill levy looks like. Here's 31% and what the mill levy looks like. And really, budget staff hasn't, haven't seen the budget forms yet either. So I want to give them at least a little flexibility to, to crunch those numbers. And again, we don't have to decide where we're at today. We just need to decide our intent.
And our intent today is this revenue-neutral, that we're not going to stay revenue-neutral?
That we want to communicate with the county, that we will, we intend to exceed it, so that at that point, then decisions as far as timeline and budget preparation all can proceed.
Okay. And I want to put a motion on the floor, and then we can continue the discussion if you all want to do that. I recommend that the Board of BOE approve communicating to the Sedgwick County by July 20th, 2023, the intent to exceed the revenue-neutral rate in capital outlay and other funds for fiscal year '24. A copy of the form to the county will be provided to the BOE members prior to submission to the county clerk.
I second that.
Okay, there is a motion on the floor, made by Cheryl, seconded by Ernestine, but I do want to keep the floor open for other questions or comments. Diane?
So whenever we talk about taxes, that's a little loud, I just want to clarify for people that are watching, we're not saying we've experienced increase in costs, so that's why, that's the only reason why we need more money. We are implementing efficiencies within the district. We are finding ways to, to be wise with the dollars that we're spending. Because when we say we've got increased costs, I have increased costs as a homeowner as well. My water bill is egregious at best. But I don't just get to increase my income because I've increased costs. So I want to be very sensitive to when we're talking about increasing tax dollars from taxpayers, that we are, we are trying to find everyday more efficiencies of how to use those dollars wisely, how to make sure those dollars are the classroom, how to make sure that those are increasing academic outcomes, to focus on student achievement. So I want to be clear that there, there is sensitivity when we're talking about gaining more tax dollars through assessed values of people's homes and businesses, because that is, we're held into account for what we do and what we spend. And I want to be clear with the public that, that we are continuing to find efficiencies with how we spend that money.
Kathy? I would like to say thank you, Diane, for mentioning that. I agree with you. The community needs to know that we are, we are looking for those efficiencies that you've discussed. And it's important that the people of our community know that. And, and like, again, Susan, you explain it very well in a layman's term, that even I can understand it at times.
I do not see any other comments. There is a motion on the floor, and I call for us to vote on that motion. Please raise your right hand if you approve of, of the motion that was made to keep us, to inform the county about being revenue, not being revenue-neutral. Raise your right hand if you approve. Motion passes seven zero. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Susan. Next item?
Next item, adjournment?
Do I hear a motion to adjourn?
Seconded.
It was moved by Diane and seconded by?
Ernestine.
Ernestine, that we adjourn the meeting. Please raise your right hand. Meeting is adjourned. We will see you. Please stay cool, drink water. Yeah, thank you very much.